I would like to call the Tuesday, July 20th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Seeing as there's absolutely nobody here, I know that there's nobody who wants to discuss anything that's not currently on our agenda, so we can skip Citizens Forum.
Before you do that.
Before.
Can we put it on the next agenda to discuss the remote meeting?
Yes.
If we didn't have enough time, somebody reached out and asked me about it, I'd love to notice that a couple of different boards and committees are still using that and questioning why they can't do it, so if we can put it on the next agenda to discuss it, it might be appropriate.
Yeah, I have a couple of the boards. Oktoberfest Committee in general seems to be irritated by the fact that they can't do that because some of their members aren't comfortable showing up in person.
Yeah.
All right.
I had one shout out in favor of the, anybody been by the town common and seen the riot of the colors of all of the bars?
Oh, yeah, it looks nice.
Wow.
Absolutely gorgeous.
It was all done by volunteers, pretty much?
Volunteers working in the hot sun, thanks to them.
Yeah.
Tina, what was the question?
Ms. Tina, yeah.
Yeah, she does a good job.
She gets people rallied up.
All right. Moving along from that, we can go to item number one. We have Colonel Booth. I believe he's on the...
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Oh, we're muted.
But we might still be picking up, but I'll just do this.
Good evening.
Can you hear us?
Good evening, yes.
Good.
All right, so Colonel Booth, you wanted to talk to us about Haze Cannabis to negotiate an HCA and possible votes?
Uh, yes, yes. So my name is Colonel Booth. I am a co-founder, I am the co-founder of a company called Holistic Health Group. We are a vertically integrated cannabis company located out of Middleborough, Massachusetts. And I am seeking to open a cannabis retail manufacturing and cultivation facility on Gilboa Avenue in Douglas. This is a separate initiative that I'm embarking on. I'm currently on multiple cultivation and manufacturing licenses in the state, and I'm looking to start something a little bit closer to home. I've secured property in town, the 67 Gilboa Street property. And it's actually, right now, it's just a, it's really, right now, it's raw land. There's not, there's no actual building there. So my plan would be to build a 2,000 square foot greenhouse and a roughly 10, I'm sorry, a 2,000 square foot retail store and a roughly 10,000 square foot greenhouse and manufacturing facility.
Okay. I'm trying to think, where is 67?
Where is 67 Gilboa located? Is it on the water side or the opposite side?
It's, do you know the parking lot across from the middle building?
Yes.
It's about, I wouldn't say it's about a quarter mile down on the left. It's like right next to the pond there. It's all, it's all raw land right now. It would be hard for you to really pinpoint it, but it's, it's down on the left-hand side, down from the...
I think I know what you're talking about.
Oh, it's where the two, all right, now I know where it is. Got it. Okay. So Colonel, the way we usually do this is that the Board of Selectmen will actually establish a subcommittee off of the board to actually work out an HCA with you. Once we go through that and all parties find that to be amenable, it's a boilerplate HCA that we've had Town Council write up for us. It's the same one that we've entered into with the other cannabis facilities that are here. Once you go through that side of it and you get your HCA with the town, go through the CCC and those processes, when the building's complete and you're ready to actually start opening is when you'd come back in front of the Board of Selectmen where we would issue you a license.
Okay.
For the retail?
Yeah, for the retail side. The cultivation side doesn't require licensing, at least from the town, just the retail. And currently, yep, and we have three licenses, three licenses available, one currently that's been applied for and issued, so there's still two hanging out there.
Two available town, right, right, okay. And do you, the, one question that I had, so I have an outdoor cultivation going right now in Middleborough. Does the town allow outdoor cultivation at all, or is it strictly indoor cultivation?
No, it will allow outdoor.
You will allow outdoor?
Yep. So I don't...
For the whole community agreement for cultivation, would it, is it, would it be one for indoor and outdoor, or would it be two separate whole community agreements for that?
I think it'd be one HCA that would encompass your entire entity, so there would be...
Are you talking about the vertical integration?
Yep. So, no, it would be two?
So you need an HCA for each category of establishment. So if you're gonna do cultivation, manufacturing, and retail, you would need three HCAs.
Three HCAs?
But they're basically pretty much the same, yeah.
Yeah. Retail is where they're selling, so we just, we have other terms. Taxation and the other treatment of it. The, and all the order control stuff would be attached to the cultivation. I guess, are you, are you gonna co-locate indoor and outdoor, Colonel, or is that gonna...
Yeah, ideally, I would like to, yeah. So, and in regards to the state licensing piece, indoor and outdoor are two separate licenses. So it would look like it'd be four total HCAs I'd be looking to pursue.
That would be the cleanest thing to do. Yeah, that kind of, that kind of makes the point move, right? So no matter where you do indoor, you would need an indoor HCA, and outdoor, you do an outdoor HCA. I was gonna say, if it was co-located, you could have one.
Yeah.
For local purposes, but if the CCC already breaks it up into different...
So we'll just follow their suit?
Yeah.
All right, so, sorry about that. So it looks like we will do an HCA for each part of the business. So one would be for your indoor, one would be for your outdoor, one would be for your...
Retail.
Retail.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, and manufacturing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
You started off saying that there was three available and one was already issued, so there's two available, so what would you do in that case?
So...
That's retail licenses.
That's retail licenses.
But there, the second one is, you know, we have people going through the zoning and planning process to get that second location approved for construction.
The limitation doesn't apply to the cultivation or, no, just the retail?
Just the retail.
We already got away from us on that, but it is for retail.
Thank you.
Yep. So...
We have to...
Yeah. Do you wanna be on that?
I'll be on it. Who else, anybody else wanna?
I can sit on it with you.
Okay, all right.
So we'll make a...
So we've designated two selectmen, myself and the chairman, to meet with you at some point.
Okay.
Matt, would it make sense?
And how would that process, is there like a step-by-step, you know, process, process for this? I know that I did see the application that I have to complete online and then the various, you know, insurances I need to secure, but do I just schedule a time to come in there and meet with you two to discuss my plan in detail?
Yeah, so the, your application is for the license at the end. The HCA is an agreement, and I can, actually, on our website, Colonel, you can find the existing cultivation HCAs, if you want an example, and you can see how the language is very similar between all of them. That would be the language that we'll probably present you with, but we can have a conversation. If you get in touch with Lisa Freeman, who's sitting here at the Board of Selectmen's office, she can coordinate people's schedules.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and it would prob...
I'll reach out to Lisa. I'm actually out of town on vacation this week, but I'll be back on Monday, so I can definitely schedule some time with you both in the near future.
All right, that works. So, and in the interim, if you wanted to, like, to what Matt alluded to, download the copies of the HCAs that we have, review them, get them to your legal counsel, see if there's questions or language that, you know, you see objectionable, or you have any questions on, and that way it's, it'll be a more productive meeting when we do sit down.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right. So we were really, Matt, we don't really need to vote on a subcommittee. We kind of did it in open forum, or would you like a formal vote?
I don't know that, yeah.
Subcommittee has no power anyway, so.
Yeah. All right.
Just gonna recommend.
Yeah, so when you get back from vacation, we'll schedule some time that we can sit down in the interim, just kind of go over what we have, and we'll, we'll start working it out.
Okay, great, great. Well, thank you very much for the time.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So on to the next agenda item, which is discussion and vote for the use of ARPA funds for SANTAC change, SANTAC change order regarding the sewer project.
So I'll do a quick introduction. I know Mr. Manerik is here. He can go over details if you have detailed questions, Mr. Chairman. The ARPA is that federal money that came through from Congress to assist in economic recovery, and it's a really a fixed formula allocation out to municipalities, and in one tranche and another group of monies is coming to counties. And for those communities that are part of a county that doesn't have functioning county government, the allocation's done on a per capita basis. When you add it all up, Douglas stands to get $2.7 million. And...
Next number. I like it.
The municipal aid is coming in two bunches, so we got $470,000 already transferred to the town. The next $470,000 will be next year. The state is still working out the details of the county allocation to the municipalities.
Would that be over or above, or the two, the amount?
No, the total of everything is $2.7 million. We have four years to spend it, and I floated this idea and I'm still serious about it, we should form a committee that prioritizes projects. What we were waiting for was guidance from the United States Treasury on what projects are eligible under the language of the legislation. That guidance came out a couple of weeks ago, and there was one very important clarifying factor, and that is, all of the municipalities will do their own eligibility determinations. The onus is on us to look at a project and see if it fits in the language of the guidance. We have to rely upon legal counsel to guide us through that interpretation. We would be subject to, because it's so much money, every community that's getting this money will be subject to a single audit, so-called federal single audit. Douglas typically doesn't get enough federal aid to trigger a single audit, but we will this year. We did, the year that we just closed, we'll be eligible for a single audit, we will next year. So we will, at some point, if we're audited, we would have to defend our use of the funds. So we want to be thoughtful about how we go about this. The good news for Douglas, and many, I think many other communities similarly situated, is that the United States Treasury put out guidance that said you are to spend these funds according to federal program guidelines, not state. In Massachusetts, many of these programs have extra requirements that are above and beyond the federal guidelines. In some cases, Massachusetts is more restrictive on what is allowed and what is not allowed, specifically for clean water and safe drinking water funded projects. So when we get the guidance that we're gonna use the federal standards, that means one really big difference. We can use these funds for engineering and design. If they were state funds, we would not be able to, but because they're federal funds, we are. So we went through a long process of vetting this with people, so Bob Sullivan, our Water Superintendent, Waste Water Superintendent, reviewed the programs according to his knowledge. Gina Britton, who is our SANTAC engineer, working on these drawings and this analysis, also familiar with the programs, did her analysis. We put those two opinions together and sent them to Rich Bowen and asked for him to send a confirmation that we were on the right track, and he agrees. We can use ARPA funds to finish the engineering and design associated, this is where I'm gonna look to Bob, the extension of sewer lines down Gilboa Street to accommodate economic development projects, not only in Douglas, but this is gonna go all the way to...
This will be the sewer line.
The sewer line's gonna go all the way to...
Blackstone Valley Logistics Center and the new pump station.
Okay, so there's, we're gonna run it out to them even if they have a sewer on site?
Well, we're trying to eliminate their sewer on site and have them do our sewer.
But the pump station is where the money came in.
Right.
And it was a change order from prior work. Your Water Commission has already invested $99,000 in engineering, so an awful lot of the work is already done. The sewer pump station ended up being more involved work than was anticipated. So change order number two is what we need to fund with ARPA funds, and that's $56,500. And that's gonna support the borings, but we're, we're not, we're gonna get to 90% design, right, Bob?
Right now, we're at 75, and that's when we submitted Mass Works in June, that we had to be a minimum 75% complete. This will bring us almost to, well, this will bring us to 100% complete. Right now, we're in the 75 to 85 range, but we need to cross that finish line by September to be 100% complete for bidding. And this is change order, will clean up everything. Some of the water that's left over, that was left out, hydrants that were needed, needed to be replaced, and this all came back from the recent surveys. But most of it is sewer and the sewer pump station, which will be state-of-the-art for future projects as well. We're designing this thing, so if there's more warehouses going in in that area, pine, sand, and gravel, we will be able to accommodate that additional flow without adding to a pump station. We're designing it for the best-case scenario right now.
This is basically seed corn to develop more tax revenue for the town.
Mm-hmm.
Makes sense to me.
We're finally getting ahead of the game on infrastructure.
Any thoughts, Mike?
No, sounds like a good plan.
What do you think, Hal?
Yeah.
Feel like making a motion on it?
Move that we, what, do you want us to say, Matt, the ARPA funds?
To use the ARPA funds.
Funds, how much for it?
Let me just think through some words. To authorize the town administrator and finance director to expend $56,500 in ARPA funds for eligible sewer-related expenses on Gilboa Street.
Is there any possibility that it would go higher than that, or we know that's a fixed cost?
Well...
Just that, I just don't wanna...
I would rather just fund what we've been invoiced and make them, make them work for any additional change.
We can always revisit it, yeah.
Yeah. So moved?
Seconded.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Good news.
Now, this 56.5 is basically a change order for authorization to proceed with work to be invoiced, just correction. This is not an invoice.
What is that quote?
Right.
The itemization...
It will be an invoice eventually. At some day. Just clarification.
Thanks, Bob. All right. Next on the agenda is discussion and vote on the intermunicipal agreement for local public health services.
Mr. Chairman, this is a late addition to your agenda, and I'll do the best I can to explain it. The municipalities in the Blackstone Valley got together, as you know, we've been cooperating for the vaccination site and sharing of information around the coronavirus outbreak and working together. And I think a lot of what the state government is trying to do right now is, is to not let this cooperation just completely demobilize. We're not at the point yet where we can completely rest assured that the whole thing is behind us, and they have this infrastructure in place of cooperation. So whether it's for booster shots or any additional, you know, future crisis coming out of the main virus itself, they want us to continue to work together, and they created Public Health Excellence Shared Services Grant Program at the state level. And there was a cooperative effort between Blackstone, Douglas, Hope Dale, Northbridge, Mendon, Millville, Upton, and Uxbridge, with Northbridge being the host community, to hire one and a half full-time equivalents of shared inspectors and a half-time employee, a community health coordinator. They will be employees of the town of Northbridge, but they will service the entire service area. And that is money that is above and beyond what we spend in our operating budget. So when the grant dies, these positions would also go away. I'm looking carefully at the language. CMRPC, serving as the lead entity for the participating towns, will receive a three-year grant with an annual award of $277,397 from the Department of Public Health. So these positions will be funded for three years, with Northbridge as, as the host. You know, we encourage staff to research and apply for grants that will be eligible for and to generally do the best they can to improve the quality of life for residents of Douglas, especially if it's gonna be done on somebody else's expense. So I'm not thrilled with getting this late this afternoon and putting it in front of you for a decision, but it's a grant, and we have to signal our willingness to participate. Fairly quick turnaround. There's an intermunicipal agreement that I think the original might be in our office, Lisa, unless you have it here. It requires board approval and at least the signature of the chair to signify that approval.
What are you throwing this at?
Well, you gotta give one to Hal.
What types of things would be, what services would be provided? See inspection, I mean, they're gonna...
So I'm gonna look at these job descriptions that CMRPC sent along for these positions, and since I've had the afternoon only to look at this, I will just read the Community Health Coordinator job, which is, I think, the half-time position in Northbridge. Employee will have the responsibility to coordinate community health programs, public education, and risk messaging, and to collaborate with a wide range of community partners to advance those initiatives. Employee is required to perform all similarly related duties. And then for the inspectors, it looks like, it's either one full-time and one half-time or three half-time. These employees will be responsible for the performance of technical inspectional work to promote and protect the public health of the district residents through the enforcement of state and local public health laws and regulations, as well as providing public health education. Now, I can give you an example, if coronavirus and COVID-19 were to resurge and we were back where we were, trying to enforce various public health mandates with businesses, et cetera, these would be the inspectors that would be sent to review the situation.
And who determines what facilities or institutions they're gonna be inspecting?
See, their oversight board.
Yeah.
Which is supposed to mean at least quarterly, which I don't think is quite enough, but at least it shows at least quarterly.
At least quarterly.
Take a, take a restaurant, for example, are they gonna be inspecting over and above what the Board of Health would do?
I think this is gonna be in lieu. So, it depends what you mean by your question. Do you mean food inspections or just...
Yeah, food and, yeah.
No, so we're gonna continue to do all the things we do.
Yeah.
So food inspections, life safety, annual inspections. This would be in response to additional public health issues.
Well, you could see like COVID.
Yeah.
Are there any other examples of what that's...
I think it's pretty amorphous right now. I followed this grant a little bit. This is a pretty substantial grant. I think it came in at such a high number because there are so many communities involved.
I think if there is a resurgence, it makes sense to have it going, like, and to have our participation in it, especially if it's, it sounds more like it's designed to augment the local Board of Health.
Just, you know, when we recollect how much extra time the town's public health nurse put in during the pandemic.
Yeah.
Never ceases to amaze me that people don't understand how hard we worked through that, but we did. And Agnieszka doubled her, her time here, and she was compensated for it, but it was a very large undertaking. And the state was providing, was backfilling all the contact tracing, and they had all these ideas, many of which didn't work out, right?
No.
I know. But we have to, I think, learn from what we just went through in the last year and a half and go along with the, having the resources ready to respond, and we will probably nip anything that comes along in the bud based on what we've learned and reacting appropriately to that.
The... $277,000, how'd that get dispersed? I guess sent to Northbridge?
Yeah.
And that's gonna cover just two employees and plus their administrative support?
It's not gonna hit us with any additional funding that we need, so it's paid for.
No, I'm just curious, that's how it's dispersed. The, it says that they're gonna meet, the oversight board's gonna meet quarterly.
At least.
And the one member and one alternate, both appointed by the Board of Health for each member of the municipality.
Yeah, it makes sense.
That's on the front page of the agreement.
Just looking at, these job descriptions have the salary ranges for those, for these hires? At the end?
Half-time positions, 32.5 to 37.5.
The inspector, that we seem to have.
Second to last page.
Might be missing.
65 to 70.
Suzanne took that page to Florida with her.
I just had a question too, on the termination clause, it says you can back out with 30 days' notice, but then it says upon such termination, the host agent shall prepare a full statement of outstanding unpaid financial obligations under this agreement and present the same to the terminating municipality for payment within 30 days. So what financial obligations would they be incurring?
I'm wondering if one of these towns withdraws from the grant, it has an impact on the grant funding.
It might.
Which would make sense, and they'd be on the hook for whatever their share of that would be.
There's no other... You're not the host, host town, why would you pull out?
Well...
Because all you're doing is, your Board of Health is just appointing a, a member and an alternate to go to a quarterly meeting, other than that.
Yeah, it's really no harm profile.
No impact to the town, correct?
It's a...
You agree, Hal?
Unless they came up with some inspections that people figure were onerous or doing some things like that, that's I'm thinking that... I'm still probably in favor, but I'm just saying, I'm just looking at the...
Yeah, I'm in favor, but you brought up a good point, is the, so they would, Northbridge being the host town, their inspectors would just go around to these eight towns inspecting?
I think plus these. Yep.
And what, and that would only be during a pandemic, or...
This is gonna be established regardless of pandemic.
I'm just wondering if it's gonna...
I think it's in anticipation of additional issues arising from the pandemic, but this is going forward, so if there, if nothing materializes, they're still gonna be there for three years.
It's almost like buying insurance.
Yeah. But they must be having something for these guys, these people, I would think. But they must be having something for these guys, these people, I would think.
I wonder, you know...
$75,000, two full-timers, $50,000 a year, I would assume that they would have some tasks to do, even if there wasn't a pandemic. And does that impact our normal inspections as far as, how's that impact our Board of Health? I'm not opposed to this, I'm just asking a question.
I guess, you know, this came on really late, so I'm, these are questions...
Do we need to do this tonight?
There's a deadline buried in this paperwork, was June 23rd. So I think that's why I'm getting so late with the rush on it.
Do you feel comfortable with moving forward with it?
I do, only because I've been following the grant when it was announced, and I wondered if we were going to apply, and then I heard we were with a group. That last question, what will they do if nothing materializes? There's a whole function that, there's a whole bunch of assets that got built to fight COVID-19 that are now available to fight other outbreaks.
Yep.
So we've improved our existing, the so-called Maven database and all of the functionality there. So whether it's Pepsi, Typhus, Tetna, you know, anything that breaks out, but I don't know.
Yeah, it sounds like a positive, so I just did some quick math in my head. Each town represents about $35,000, so you're taking a $35,000 gamble if it totally goes sideways, but it sounds like that it's a...
I guess we just have...
A positive direction to try.
It would have to go really badly.
No, I know that, I'm just, I like to consider the negative as well as the positive in it, not to focus on it, just to acknowledge it, that's all.
Relatively safe risk.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the funding thing that says...
CMRPC gets some of the admin, too, so it's not all going to the personnel.
Right. It's unfortunate that our CMRPC designee isn't here to discuss on it, because...
But he would be right on top of it.
He would be. He spends a lot of time at those meetings.
Much to the chagrin of his wife, probably.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no way of reaching him, right, to put him on like a...
He may be out perambulating bounds at this point in time, I'm not sure.
Says until grant funds are expended, there will be no cost to participating municipalities. XQ says, says that does not obligate any municipality to fund, and a contract amendment would be required to do so.
So we say...
As that require, I guess everybody's consent to do it? Okay, just didn't want any backdoor money being assessed to town.
Right.
Other than that, probably good idea.
All right. Anybody who want to make a motion on this?
So moved that we approved the...
Enter into the interim...
Intermunicipal agreement for local public health services as presented to the board this evening.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have to appoint an interim slash temporary town administrator from October 13th to October 27th with possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, under the terms of the Town Administrator Act, if the town administrator anticipates being out of town for a prolonged period of time, it's designate an interim to execute the duties of the office. And it's in my contract as well, and it's in the police chief's contract that he would be the designee. It requires notice to the board, not necessarily a vote to approve, but I will be away visiting the mouse for those 14 days.
Hopefully it doesn't rain.
And hopefully it doesn't rain.
Oh, no.
I'm hoping with 14 days that it's not all going to be rain. I just, I did want this on the agenda, not just as a notice, because I just wanted to kind of make the point that for the past several years running, I've turned back the majority of my vacation time. And this year, I just can't do that, and I need to get away for a little while. And while I'm in that particular location with all these kids, I'm probably not really going to be connected in any way. I just want everybody to kind of understand that, when I'm not here, Nick is going to be the guy, and unless some huge building burns down or an F-4 tornado blasts through town, I don't want to hear about it until I get back. What this means, though, is that in preparation for fall town meeting, my office, my work, I have to get the warrant completely signed, sealed, and delivered and closed, and all of the prep work for the select board and for town meeting done, because there'd be very little time...
When you return.
From the time I get back to the meeting. So this is a, I've already told a lot of my department heads, this is a little bit of a warning shot. Please, 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 if you want something on this fall town meeting warrant, please tackle it early so that we can make sure that there's a placeholder and that FinCom has what it needs well in advance. Because once I'm gone, it's not quite really fair to lean on the police chief to all of a sudden step up and do town meeting.
Yeah.
So...
Hopefully your hotel has a well-stocked bar for you.
Heck, no, I'm not buying that stuff there. It's like 20 bucks a shot.
I hope you have an actor suitcase that clinks a little bit on the way down.
Those bars in the room, they have weight removal, is that what you're talking about? The mini bars or...
All those mini bar things, and especially at a resort like that, they're like so overpriced.
I was, I was in Mexico years ago, and somebody, a farmer tourist was checking out, and he thought it was all free, he had a bill for like $1,200.
Oops. So that's just, I have to provide you with notice, so there it is.
Enjoy your trip.
Well in advance.
I hope you get better weather than I did on my vacation, man.
I don't think that's hard to do.
So we were pointing to police chief as...
Yes.
Yes, as in his contract, right?
Yeah, and it's also been what we've done, so if I'm gone for more than 24 hours, I usually do this quickie with Nick, but this is a longer period of time, so he'll be signing warrants and all the rest.
I'm sure he's very excited to do that.
You could always schedule an insurance discussion while I'm gone, have Nick put in his two cents.
He does have a weapon, you know.
He does have a weapon.
Oh, I wish I'd had one when we were there that night. All right.
Do we need to take a vote?
No, no vote needed, it was just, he's just letting us know.
Informational.
Giving us the heads up. So it brings us to item number five, whereas Mr. Bonin is not present, would it make sense to pass this over until Tim is here, so we actually have our version of a full board? Makes sense to you?
Did he express any interest in wanting to wait?
He wanted to talk on it, too.
Okay, then we'll, then we'll wait.
That work?
Absolutely.
No objections?
No objections.
All right. Approved minutes and possible votes? If you'll notice, the minutes are thick, it's because there was an insurance discussion in them.
And they'll be tomorrow, they'll stick.
Minute taken at Carpal Tunnel as a result of this. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the June 1st, 2021 meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there was no executive session, right? That's it? Or am I missing something?
There wasn't, not even...
God, that's a long thing. I don't even want to read it again. Brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, Douglas has been almost like a target on the map for every thunderstorm that's tried to make its way across central Massachusetts, and I actually swear that there was a storm that was headed through the middle of the state. It stopped north of Douglas, took a direct right-hand 90-degree turn, came down and bombed Wallem Lake just one more time before it disappeared.
I almost missed Douglas.
Exactly. It was marching right along, and then it just went boop, and...
It hit the Omaha Trail, too.
I was going to say, I think that...
It started there, the other one that got it all riled up. So we've ended up with an awful lot of water around town, and most of the assets of the town have handled it just fine. In some cases, I think, there was one storm, 3 o'clock in the morning, one morning, you might have gotten as much as four and a half inches of rain in about an hour. It's an awful lot of water. We've had a couple of minor building mishaps. I really want to thank Adam Furno and Selectman Fitzpatrick for climbing around on the roof out here that Sunday, was that a Sunday? To fix a roof drain, and with a vendor, right?
Yep.
And determine what was wrong and to address it. Those kinds of things save us a ton of money, because the water didn't pile up on the roof and didn't backfill any other drains.
And we can get one of those infamous painful...
Yes.
Insurance claims.
We didn't want any insurance claims. At the schools, they've had a little bit less luck. They have a specific drain that drains to a roof drain, and the roof drain was clogged up and surcharged the pipe and it backflowed into a sprinkler closet. I'm told that there's no damage, but we'll withhold judgment over time in CO. Water has a way of being a real vicious enemy. Long story short, there are significant drainage issues that have come up on the Shore Road Like any natural phenomenon, there are many contributing factors to what goes on. One is, obviously, it's a flash flood, and no matter how well-prepared you are, you're still going to have to cope with tremendous amount of water coming really quickly. So that's, that's the number one thing, is that it rained a lot in a really short period of time. We have a brand-new solar field out there with stormwater management design. This probably wasn't a fair first test for that design, but the design does not appear to have been totally successful. Town officials went out and inspected and reviewed the water during the rain, so they were out there watching the water flow, and it was really raging through the stormwater culverts, and really, the silk fence formed probably the strongest dam you've ever seen. This thin paper up on these really thin pieces of what, is that strapping that they...
And one-by-one.
Little one-by-ones, and all the water is at the top of this silk fence.
It did a really phenomenal job holding it back.
But it also focused, it also focused the flow into the woods.
It looked like a kiddie pool.
Not to mention the fact that, I'm not going to wade into the dispute, I'll just simply say that there is a dispute over improvements made or changes made to some of the stormwater management on Shore Road itself and that crossshore road into another property. It is, it appears impossible to argue the physics of it, the water can no longer flow the way it wants to flow. So it goes over the road and was washing out some of the residents' homes in that area. We have an obligation as a town to address emergency circumstances that affect citizens. And today, it's your neighbor, tomorrow, it might be you. But if we know that a bad situation is developing, and the town has resources to help alleviate suffering, we can deploy those resources without creating liability for the town. And that is precisely what we did. With the advice of legal counsel, we have made no improvements or fixes to the road itself. That is not our problem, that is private property. To the extent that anybody altered the flow of water down there, those are matters for the private parties to work out amongst each other, knowing full well that the solar farm's very willing to assist financially and physically to address the problem. We've got to work out some of the disagreements. But the town itself only did one thing. We stationed pumps in the water in perforated buckets, pumped the water across the street with emergency generators, and so that it could flow into the lake, and it was pumped through straw waddles, so we were cleaning the water on both ends, the pump end and the output end. And DEP is aware of this and is fine with what the town did. The residents are grateful, one of the residents was in the selectman's office today to thank the town for the efforts that we made. It's the right thing to do, is to help somebody when their, when their basement's filling up, and it's reaching their electrical service, and it becomes a danger to everyone, the right thing to do is to take steps, the minimum necessary to alleviate the danger to those people. That's a decision we made early on, and I'm glad we did it. And tomorrow, it looks like we have another day of really severe weather coming through, because this system is very stubborn, so we could have a really bad day tomorrow. Nothing may happen, or we could have a really bad day. Also, with those lightning events here in town, it is my understanding that some damage, either from a direct strike or from ancillary events, was caused to the elementary school, so electrical service there has been interrupted in part. There are some light issues on the second and third floor, there's probably damage resulting. What we learned, what we've been told, and now that we learned firsthand from our fire department experience, is that when lightning hits your electrical service, it may be weeks before you really see, some of these appliances will chug along and try to survive, and then they just die. So the book is still out on what the damage is to the elementary school. We have a new employee, or actually, two people, that have started in the Community Development Department. I have appointed an interim director, and everybody was provided with notice of this, I don't know if you read your email. I have the authority under the Town Administrator Act to make, and the personnel bylaws and policies and procedures of the town, to make short-term appointments to vital roles. And so I've done that, I've hired a planner, hails from Newton, Mass., who has worked around the state as a planner in various different municipalities. We don't want to lose time, and we don't want to give anybody constructive approval of applications. We want to clean up the process and make sure that the workflow through the planning board, CONCOM, and the zoning board is moving along, especially the planning board, because you need special skills to review subdivision applications and provide concise, accurate comments on what you're looking at. Eve Tapper is a very experienced person. She's also helping us prepare the project for E-permitting in that function. So first things first, right? When you look at our zoning code and the subdivision regulations, you see a lot of ways to get relief. And you don't have to be a subject matter expert on developing land or be an engineer to due process. Every single form of relief should have an application, so that when someone comes in, you can hand them the precise application they need to get the form of relief they want. And we have to sort out what those different forms of relief mean procedurally. So for instance, today, we had a conversation about a proposal that involves a reduced amount of frontage. Well, in the zoning code in section 4.3, there's a way for the planning board to endorse a plan, but what is that? Is that an A&R? Is it a subdivision? What is it exactly? Because it's not part of any other section. I think you can reason both ways. I think actually the law would allow you to, I think if you want to default to processes, you would say that because the reduced frontage is restricted to no more than two lots, that you're kind of saying, we're going to give an exemption to the subdivision definition, provided you only have two lots, and you meet all the other requirements. So it may be an A&R, but it's not clear to anyone. We have to clarify all that stuff, so that when we do process, everything is clear to everyone involved. What I, what documents I need to submit, to whom and by when, do I need a public hearing, or is it just a public meeting? We really want to... a public hearing or is it just a public meeting? We really want to be much more customer-friendly in that sense. Here is your specific list of things that you need to do to get through the process so that that person can now say, oh, I'm not going to be blindsided, right? If I have to do a landscape plan, I have to do a landscape plan. If I have to do this, I have to do that. It shouldn't be a mystery. It shouldn't come up at the last minute. It shouldn't be missing. It shouldn't get to the planning board if it's not complete. But we have broad consensus on this, so I'm hoping that Eve can help us establish the work plan. We also have a full-time employee that's been brought in there as a principal clerk. We will be going to town meeting to change that title from, I think it's Administrative Secretary, to Principal Clerk, to make the trains run on time, to follow through on all of these designations. And again, subject matter expertise was not the only factor in deciding how we were going to structure this office. We want somebody to get along with people and work well with the technology that we want to put in place. So, we're going to spend a little extra time in training, but I think it's going to be, over the long run, much, a really healthy environment for the town. I'm excited about it. It's a lot of work, so I'm saying sober, but I am excited about it because I think it's going to address a lot of procedural hiccups that we've had along the way. And everybody will know exactly where they stand and that's an improvement. But most importantly, I think, we have to serve the planning board as well as we can. You know, when they get a packet, it should be what they need to look at and there shouldn't be any discussion about what's missing and what needs to be there. So, I really am hoping to improve our day-to-day management of issues for the satisfaction of the planning board and CONCOM and the zoning board so that all of this feels like it's well put together and tight. One of the things I'll tell you is, that means we need to rely more than we have in the past on legal counsel because we need advice on how to sort all of this stuff out. And so, with these new people on board, one of the things I'm really trying to reinforce, also the building commissioner is relatively new, please utilize legal counsel as much as you need. Don't be shy. At some point, if Mead, Teller, and Costa feel like we're pushing beyond what they're billing us for in the flat rate, they'll talk to us. They're business people. They'll let us know. I keep track of the hours they use and I think we've been kind, a little bit under what we pay for on an hourly rate. So, I'm fine with fill it up and get good answers, good solid answers for people. And I just impressed upon members of the boards, you know, please keep an open mind to legal counsel's advice and it'll go well. The project here in Town Hall to remediate the fuel oil spill in the basement, we have a glimmer of hope. The last time the environmental contractor was here, they bailed some of the water out of the test well. And while it smelled like heating fuel, when the chemical test came back, it was, it was below threshold levels. It's possible that all this rain and some groundwater has diluted the petrochemical that's contaminating the area. It's also possible that it stopped and we got it all, that the last time that was bailed, we got the rest of it. So, here's hoping, right? Knock on wood. We're still going to be at least $100,000 over our insurance coverage. So, we will have to go to town meeting in the fall to ask for that money to satisfy the bills for the cleanup. It's a very sobering thing. It was a lot of fuel, but it's very sobering to contemplate the amount of money that gets spent to clean up 350 gallons of fuel oil. It's 600,000 bucks. It's a lot of money.
And listen, if Town Meeting doesn't approve that, I'm going to make him sit through an insurance presentation.
Don't threaten anybody, but it's one of those things I don't.
Send them a Peloton and send them all.
Yeah. We got our cherry sheet today from the budget that was recently signed by the governor after being approved by the legislature. No real big changes except we got a little bit more on pilot than we anticipated. We budgeted about 212. We actually got 245. So, there's been a slight improvement on that score.
That works.
But everything's pretty much in line with where we were for budget projections.
School aid in chapter 90, yeah.
Yep. We don't get chapter 90 on the cherry sheet. That's a separate.
Separate act.
Yeah. Tonight, right about now, I meant to get an email out sooner, but they're going to be paving the bridge over the southern New England.
They didn't find anything with that depression?
Doesn't appear that they feel like they've found anything with the depression or they haven't reported it to us yet. So, they were out there milling and grinding was that Thursday. They stripped the asphalt off and tonight, from eight o'clock on, they're going to pave. We asked them to just close the bridge and pave the bridge all at once rather than paving one lane at a time and letting people pass.
One and a half lanes anyway.
It's just a lot faster and will prevent people from driving over the material right away. And detouring, I think they're going to use Walnut Street as a detour for northbound traffic. Actually, yeah, northbound traffic south of the bridge. So, that's where we are. There'll be police details out there. Sorry to anyone who's inconvenienced, but this was a necessary, we really had to investigate what was going on there. It's the state's bridge, not ours. Thank goodness. But they don't seem to be too concerned about it right now. The Cedar Street Bridge Project is delayed about a week, so we had poles scheduled to be moved after you guys did the pole petition. Thank you for rushing through that. But this weather has changed grid's workflow, so they will be out there next week moving the poles. Once the poles are moved, we'll see the project get moving. There's 88 days from the day that shovel first hits the ground to when they have to deliver us completed bridge. So, other than that, we are working on any number of procurements and grants. I signed the documents this week for the electric charging station here at the Town Hall. There will be four parking spots in the municipal center parking lot, clearly marked, very clearly marked with phosphorescent, blue paint, green paint.
No parking.
Two outlets. Each one has two hookups, so four.
Big enough for my truck. Can you administer an electric shock to any people that are trespassing in the wrong space?
No.
Can I use it to start my truck or?
Just, yeah, this is early in this part of our lives. Will we all convert to electric or not? I don't know. So, rather than juice up all four at a full ride, we're going to circuit share. So, if there are two people who are at the same station, they'll get half power. So, if somebody's already there, go to the other one. You'll get 100%.
Is it open to anybody or do you have to be a Douglas resident?
So, this will be a matter for the board to decide. So, when we get the software package, we can design any pricing system you want to have.
It's metered, correct?
It is metered and the charges, you have to log in with your credit card to get, to get the thing to turn on. But we have complete control over the rates charged. So, if you want us to eventually get a town inspector's car that's electric, for instance, pretending, okay? You could say zero, that's a 0%, a $0.00 charge. It's the town's. And town residents could be a low rate and anybody traversing town and needs to stop can be cost-plus, right? We have complete control over that. And that tiered system is what's recommended and it sounds right to me that we let townspeople just pay the town's municipal rate on electricity, which is lower than they get at home. And when somebody's from out of town, we'd basically...
Juice them.
Juice them. There's a lack of a more delicate way to say it.
Isn't there, there's a third party that we go through though, between the power company?
Yes.
So, we have to pay their rate.
Software administrator. So, they're just going to take a 3% administrative charge. They are not, they are not the power off-taker, so they're not charging their rate. It's our, the town's quote-unquote "power" so the town can charge its rate.
Curious how many locations there are in the area towns.
You know, it's interesting. We've had some people stop and ask where the closest one is because they're, went a little too far and they're not going to get much further. So, we usually guide them, but I'm not expecting there to be a line, you know? But it's going to be a resource that's there. And the fact that the state paid for this almost entirely, there's, we have to pay, I think it's $6,000 of a $56,000 project or more. We're fine with it, right? Because eventually, we may not have a whole lot of choice. In a decade, we may all have to charge it.
Would we add any signage to the end of Depot Street stating that it's uphill?
We could and we could put it on people's GPS too, that there's a station there. I think when you really start to inquire, you might be surprised. There might be a fair number of people in town that have.
Well, I'm just thinking, no, people passing through town and then, oh, my Prius is out of juice. Yeah, I got to get this thing to.
I want to ask that the symbol be like a hamster in the wheel.
Yeah. But that's, that was in the context of procurement. So, our, the priority items are the generator for this building and the roof of this building. It doesn't make sense to get anything else out before those things. We're talking about making this an emergency operations center. We need a fully functioning generator. Our current generator's not in a good place.
And a dry building.
And we need a dry building. And all the rest of the conversation, no matter how aggravated one way or the other, those things have to be dealt with first. Another high-priority item that we just cannot ignore is when the fire station was hit by lightning and we started to look into what we need to do to repair. Did I forward that report? We had a survey. We paid for a survey out of the fire department's budget to review all of the electrical connection and outfitting of the building. It is not up to snuff for its current mission. At the time it was built, it was fine. There's nothing wrong with the decisions made at that time, but circumstances have changed and now we have a different deal.
About 50% underpowered.
Yeah. So, we have 400 amps of single-phase service going into that building. The electrical engineer who did the survey of our power needs says we need 600 amps of three-phase service. We currently have a 30 kW generator. Now, for folks keeping score at home, if you have an electric coil-top stove in your kitchen, just to turn on one of those coils is eight kW. So, literally, if you put on four burners on your stove, four times eight is 32, the fire department generator doesn't have enough power to power that stove. That's not where we are today. What has changed? We charge computers. We charge radios. Everything's plugged in to get a battery charge. It's a totally different world than it was 10 years ago. So, we're going to have to string some extra receptacles and new circuits along with that 600 amp surface so that we're not doing what we're doing right now, which is extension cords and power strips. We also need to do a better job of surge suppression and maintaining a decent temperature in our technology closet, which is basically a broom closet with a whole bunch of stuff stacked, including our radio system, the piece, components that are in there. The electrical engineer was concerned. He said, this is all life safety equipment. It shouldn't be set up this way.
There should not be toilet paper stacked on it.
That is also a priority. I don't, I'm not going to apologize to anyone to making these things priorities and putting other things aside to deal with life safety infrastructure that we have to have in place. And Town Meeting just approved these funds and July 1st was the first time I could legally say that they were available for spending on RFPs. And the goal is to get the RFPs out in August, so we're going as fast as we can. And anything that hasn't, anything that's waiting in the queue is just going to have to wait until we can address these things. I hope everybody understands it's not to be crass or dismissive of other projects in town. It's every single thing we do, we have to prioritize by the number of people it impacts and how significant the impact is to each person that feels it. And fire and ambulance service and emergency operations here in town affect every resident of town in a very significant way. So, that's where we are with all of that. That's an awful lot of material, but it has been an extremely busy three weeks. I know I'm forgetting a whole bunch of stuff, but those, I would say, in terms of share of mind, those other than what I have to go over in executive session, which is a whole nother can of worms, that's where we are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I just have one question. You never have just one question.
Follow-ups don't count.
Going back to the planner, that the, working on the online permitting and all that other thing, just with my interactions in other towns and what happens here, this seems, and I can't get a direct answer as to how, what the procedure is, but somebody could come in with an application, go to the town clerk, have it stamped in, and that technically starts the calendar moving prior to whether it's planning, zoning, or conservation, reviewing that application to see if it's complete and accurate. So, that could lend us to move towards a constructive approval.
I think.
Other towns that I go into, if I fill that out, I have to go in, they take it. After they accept it, they'll walk down and have it stamped in to be accepted by the town.
In my business strategy consulting career, process and procedure was a focus of my practice. And you make small problems. By the time you get to the end of the process, you end up with an upside-down refrigerator, right? And the doors bang into each other when you open them because the little mistakes you made at the beginning. This is, we start off wrong because now the clock starts.
Correct.
Before anybody has had any chance to see what's going on. So, now, if you're the board chair, you want to preserve the town's prerogatives, right? So, you schedule it. You allow it to go on the agenda, even if it may not technically be complete because you've got to start the hearing.
Correct.
So, because you can continue the hearing well beyond the end. You just can't not start the process. So, then we end up in this, what I consider, listen, it's just my opinion, but I consider it to be a morass. When I watch these meetings, I see a lot of conversation about thinking that's incomplete. So, either the plan doesn't have a component it needs to have or somebody needs to be corrected. Some aspect of the plan doesn't look right and it needs to be addressed. So, then you rush through that. You hand some of the feedback to the applicant. You continue the hearing, but since we've been rushing, we may not have looked at everything. So, at the next time the hearing gets restarted, there's more issues. Now, the applicant's frustrated because the applicant says, oh my God, this is a moving target. You keep changing your view of things. I've seen it with my own eyes firsthand when I watch some of these meetings. So, I'm not faulting anybody. So, what we have to do is we have to get on a footing where absolutely nothing is accepted by anybody until it's complete. And the electronic platform works like TurboTax. You can't hit submit. It's not going to go anywhere unless you've uploaded all the components that you're supposed to upload. There may still be plenty of comments to be made, but at least now, the clock starts. You should clock that thing in with reference to when you have to post it for a hearing or for a public meeting so that you don't waste a lot of time. You want to be as close to your posting deadline as you can be so that you give the boards the most time they can get to do the consideration or to feed back. That's the goal. I don't know, you know, there'll always be issues because every piece of land is different and every plan is different.
Well, there's a review and the review portion of it is going to, it won't be accepted until it gets past that first step.
Yeah.
So, then, but.
We should cut down on all of this incomplete.
Correct. And that's what my concern is until we are up to that point.
Yeah.
Because I even asked Maria. I said, how's this work? She says, well, she's, I get an application, then I have the applicant go down and have it stamped in at the town clerk. I said, well, I don't agree with that because I could just walk in the other door, bypass your office, say, hey, Maria told me to have it stamped in. They don't know any better. I just think it... I just think it should be somebody from that department that would actually bring it over to have it stamped in, if that's what the, what's required to be stamped in.
And communication back and forth with the clerk's office, too. Maybe we have a flag. Maybe it's a golden rod piece of copy paper that says, "This is ready to be stamped."
Right.
If you don't have that golden rod piece, I'm not stamping it for you.
I asked the clerk's office, and they said, "Chris wasn't in." And I asked Lisa, and she says, "Well, what happens is if nobody's in the community development, then we'll accept it and stamp it in." And I said, "Well, that office is fully staffed, and I find it hard to believe that there's nobody in there." So, somebody should be out of, whether it's, I know Jackie works in building, and now we have Jen and Maria on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and, but somebody's always in the office. They should be able to accept that, to put on the, the principal clerk's desk or the planner's desk or whatever, until they review it. If they accept it, then they get it stamped in.
So, the objective is to get Jen up to speed as quickly as possible. She'll be here the most.
Yeah.
And Eve is here on Tuesdays, and Maria's here on Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Just so we're not ending up with, we're, recently, we've had people come in, we don't know what we're supposed to do. So, we're going to apply for a special permit and a variance. So, then we're at the meeting trying to decipher, do they need a special permit or a variance, going back and forth, and then we're, okay, so we'll give them back their money on this one, because they didn't need that, and it's just not productive for the board to try-
It slows things down. I think some of this comes from the language, too, and it's not a topic for now, but looking forward to perhaps next Spring Town Meeting in next May. There are a couple of very specific, I think we all know where they are. When you've read the zoning code and subdivision regulations, you know, there's a language about pre-existing non-conforming. One form of expansion requires a special permit, the other requires variance, and the language is as thick as mud to try to figure out how to distinguish between the two. We, we just, we know those are problems, so we should just clarify it.
I'm just thinking from the town's interest. That's why I brought up about accepting and stamping, and prior to it being reviewed by somebody in community development.
Yeah. There's got to be a checklist. I agree.
Maybe it's time to clean up the zoning bylaws a little bit again.
I, but that's how, I mean, that's how I feel. A good thing to do would be to look at your use table every five years. Society changes.
Yeah.
20 years ago, maybe it was longer than that, but we're all old enough to remember. If somebody had said to you, "Adult daycare center," you would have said, "What the heck is that?" Right? That, that's what nursing homes are for, right? We didn't do a lot of this temporary daily care for people at the same level we do it now. So, the, no surprise that every municipality I've ever worked for has struggled with trying to cram an adult daycare center proposal into the children, the pre-K childcare center definition, or, you know-
Should be in the adult entertainment area.
It's completely different, right? You just have a, it's a completely different kind of building. The kids are playing outside, making a lot of noise. The adults are inside getting, you know, care for their, their daily needs. It's just completely different. And so, those, those are the kinds of things that we have to. We may also want to have more in-depth conversation about cannabis as well. It's been nice to be this open for this long and attract people to locate here. Going forward, do you want anything in zoning about it? Maybe you don't care about all the current uses, but if somebody says you can have a, a smoke bar, if people come and smoke, like you would have a cigar bar, well, where do you want those to be located? You might be, want to be more restrictive about those than you are about the others. Just food for thought, but there's, there's a there there. There's room to really go through the zoning code. Subdivision regulations go back to 1975?
All right. So, Matt, are we doing A, B, C, and D under executive-
Yes, we are, but they will all be highly-directed reports.
All right. So, I'm going to try Tim's motion.
Uh-oh.
I'd like to make a motion to leave regular session and enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining, interest in real property, litigation, and investigation, and then leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Sole purpose.
Sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Motion has been, yes?
No. Just a roll call vote, right?
Yeah. Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
That's Patrick I.
David I.
Moore I.